Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, April 29th, regular annual meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. I would like to thank you all for joining us here on this evening, and I ask now that we please withstand and pause for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. We're now relaying our pledge of allegiance by our board member, Mr. Vernon Tillage.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We'll now be relaying our school board mission statement by Mr. Tillage at this time.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you, sir. Agenda item 2.5, attendance will be roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mrs. Hines?
Here.
Mr. Parent?
Here.
Mrs. Schumay?
Present.
Mrs. Thomas? Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Reverend Patillo?
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 2.6, approval of the agenda for April 29th, 2021. We'll entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second?
Approved by Mr. Parent and second by Ms. Hines. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 2.7 is for a closed session to review our employee transaction report at this time. If we don't have any need for a closed session on that, we can actually bypass the item. Do any board members need to address any items on that in closed session?
No, sir.
Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item 3.1, discussion, public comment, non-agenda item speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers at this time?
Yes, sir, we do. The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have any registered, if you have registered to speak prior to the meeting, the clerk will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comment period for non-agenda item only. Due to the length of our meeting, the school board requires that you keep your comments to five minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman. And Reverend Patillo, there are three speakers, but they asked that they might be able to come up together.
Right, thank you.
Those speakers are Mrs. Paula Gibson, Mrs. Tenaya Jordan, and Mrs. Kathy Harrell.
Good evening, um, school board members. Our third speaker, she got sick at the last minute, so I'll be reading her portion today. I just want to thank you all for giving us the time to, um, come before you. I'm standing in, on behalf of me and my fellow coworkers for the Transportation Department. The Transportation Department is one of the most impacted departments in the school division. Each day, the school drivers, bus drivers, and monitors are the first people to arrive to work and the last to depart for the day. With this being said, we may be the most impacted, but we are the most neglected and least appreciated. For many years, we have put our best foot forward regardless of any obstacles and tribulations we have been presented or forced to deal with, only to be disregarded, disrespected, misled, and misinformed. According to the PPS handbook, all employees are expected to comply with reasonable requests from an authorized supervisor, meet established performance, um, standards, perform duties in the most effective and efficient manner possible, exercise courtesy, tact, and sound judgment in dealing with supervisors, fellow workers, students, and the public, refrain from disorderly conduct, apply himself or herself to these assigned duties during the full schedule for which the employees is being compensated. We have fulfilled all these requirements, but what do we do when authority figures who are not following these same standards themselves? Today, we are standing together to speak positive resolution instead of always complaining, as said from multiple people in higher positions. Which brings us to three topics that we wish to resolve. First, unsafe working conditions. We have worked through the pandemic since April, starting with the food distribution run. We always presented pressure to return to work in September with little or no information on how we would be protected, and we are currently transporting hybrid students and never received any COVID training or instructions so that we feel safe and confident in fulfilling our day-to-day tasks, no matter how big or small. At our in-service meeting in August, we were shown a slide, um, that showed PPE and chemical containers that was not, no explanation on how to use the chemicals, um, or when to use the chemicals and different chemicals, and what to do in the event that the chemicals were spilled or worse than if a student came in contact with the chemicals. In this meeting, it was also explained that if any employee came in contact with COVID, that we would not be given a name, but we would be informed if someone in the fleet has tested positive. So we would like to take the, so we could take the necessary precautions to protect ourselves. Since we returned in September, we have had several positive cases, um, the hidden, that were hidden, that put ourselves and our families at high risk. In previous school board meetings, it was stated that no student would be permitted to board a school bus without a mask, and this incident has happened on a daily basis. It was also stated that there will be a monitor for each bus during the transition, which is also, well, we have not received that either. To add insult to injury, several schools have banned the bus drivers and monitors from entering the building due to COVID. However, we have transported their security guards, food service workers, coaches, and other, uh, facility, facilities, faciliters, faculties, I'm sorry, other faculties on our buses from these very same schools. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members.
Good evening.
I first want to begin by telling y'all thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to speak. I want to thank my monitors, my bus drivers who are here to support us in this moment of speaking our truth. Um, I'm going to try to brief this as much as possible because we can literally go on for days with this situation. Um, I'm gonna start off as simple as I can. My name is Tenaya Jordan. I have been a bus driver here now for Portsmouth Public Schools Systems for five years. I come to you today to address some deep, emotional, yet very necessary concerns for the leadership of my department. I want to begin by first thanking everyone for this time today. So many of my coworkers in this department from 2016 have undergone so much hardship. When I began in 2016, I interviewed with the very dearly missed Mr. Gary Lilly, as well as my current lot leader, Deanna. I remember going into that interview terrified, eager to accomplish something I felt and believed would be life-changing for me and my children as well as my community. Mr. Lilly read all of that. With this famous, with his famous monotone and smile, he looked at me and asked, "Do you feel you're ready for this? Because just by speaking with you, I believe that you are, but you have to believe it yourself." I instantly changed my posture and I replied, "Oh, I'm ready." In class, I was trained under Terry Cronin. I could never forget her dedication, even under the limitations, when she could no longer push through our classes, Mr. Lilly stepped in. He said to us, "Okay, now y'all should be out of this class. What do y'all need from me to help you get there?" That same day, he came back, ran through so much information, and handed us a guide, and said, "If you're, if you studied this, you will be guaranteed to pass." I did just that and flew out of DMV proud. I was put under the wings of Ms. Lori, and who I owe much thanks to, because although it wasn't her job, she showed me the ropes. I say all that to say, transportation was a family. This was a place of togetherness. Notice, I never said perfect, but there was fairness, there was communication, and there was leadership who always made it known that they cared, even if they got on our nerves as well as we got on theirs. From early morning clock ins to late night clock outs, and I do mean late night, Mr. Lilly was there before and after us. Although, mouthy as we are, we had a prob, if we had a problem, he was there to get back with us and address it. Today, there is a big hole missing in our leadership. We have rushed misinformation, another, another lot didn't get, another lot did. I'll get back to you later, and they never do. We are told, "I'm not sure. You'll have to get with your lot leader." I'm not familiar with that. We barely lay eyes on our leadership. Unless we have done something wrong, they are most times here after us and leave before us. They sweep our concerns under the, under the rug, and when we tell them we are not comfortable with a task, they watch as we stand by and take accountability for the mistakes. And just recently, we decided to attend this school board meeting, and yes, they knew, but haven't yet to attempt to hold a meeting with us, to simply say, "What's wrong? How can we help now, and how can we fix it?" They say open-door policy, but I don't even know where my, where to find my director. I only see him at meetings when he runs down his qualifications and his famous jargon since he speaks to our, on our behalf, yet no one finds him approachable, or anyone has had any run-ins or introductions as a meeting greet with him. We have been crying for help, but fear for retaliation from HR or our directors or coordinators and supervisors in which we have seen coworkers keep these going firsthand, so we keep complaining to ourselves. But to, but we are no longer being held to our silence. We are putting our necks out on the line to ask, beg, and very nicely demand for a change in our leadership. We have had people who fought for us but quickly disappear, or have to sneak around to talk with us. The bullying mentality is often used due to the very proudly and boastful so closeness of our leadership with the superintendent of the school board. How do I know this to be true, you ask? Well, I'll answer that question with a question. What happened to our router? What happened to the different support staff? What happened to some of our principals?
Excuse me, Ms. Jordan. Just, I don't mean, it's like, you've been five minutes, but if it's okay with the board if she keeps going, okay, I just want to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Patillo. What happened to some of our drivers, for that matter? Where's the regular security guard that's usually at the school board meetings? This may very well be the cause of our shortness in the school system, not because no one wants the job, but because the bullying in the workplace. We sup, we support student bullying, but there are, are there any standard policies in place to oppose me telling someone and it being reported back to my supervisors without remediation or resolution? The one solid person who fought for us so loud and proud until she began to simmer down and disappear and return, not the same router as we knew before. Although, we all know who stepped up after the loss of our coordinator, without hesitation or asking for anything in return, without having to say much and always a call away, we knew the pressure was on her shoulders, and we thank you for that. But once this final departure happened, we had to look onto ourselves to say, "What now? Who hears us? Who speaks for us?" The answer, no other than our own mouths. We are tired of unfairness and favoritism. You ask how it's favoritism? Well, after all, we are one. We all are one. So when our leadership mentions that they have a favorite lot, that divides us. When we are left on a lot to supervise ourselves and no leadership steps up to say, "Good morning, I'm here in the place of your lot leader absence today, and if you need anything, let me know." And being new should never be an excuse, because our superintendent was also once new, but quickly stepped up to the plate to fulfill his role. When no one hears our complaints of sitting on the bus in idle mode for 6.5 hours, which most of us sit with our pillows and blankets to kill time with sleep, when training procedures could be given, since we do have a lot of training that is still needed, what kind of training, you ask? There are drivers who have never worked a lift bus, or with sped children. There are 77 passenger buses that have not been trained on. There are COVID procedures that have, that need to be taught, because if you ask me what to do if a sped student gets up and gets into the chemicals, I could not begin to tell you, because for one, I don't know what they, what the chemicals are. We ask for a leadership that would continue to enforce seniority, because five years ago, you did not get a new bus or a permanent extra route without putting in a responsibility and a dedication. Now, we have new bus drivers who are jumping over our seniority of 40 years because of, "Oh, thank you for that favor that you did." We are demanding, and I add nicely, for someone to take leadership in our department who has more experience and better knowledge of our city, who actually cares for our well-being in the community, as well, with your children as well as my own, who are used to running such a large fleet of buses, who can actually hear our questions and get our answers and meet our needs. Because at the end of the shift, we still live amongst this community, and we are front lines for questions that can't be answered while our leadership is off miles away. The information I provided you today is, is only but put in a timely manner due to others needing to speak. However, there is more information that lies within operations. There are more than sure, my fearlessness today, even through bullying tactics, will become more comfortable with speaking out about if the entire school board reaches out. Thank you again, school board, for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gibson and Ms. Her, Ms. Gibson and Ms. Jordan, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm sorry, you weren't finished?
No, I was gonna speak on behalf of Ms. Harrell, because she wasn't here. Are we allowed to do that or no?
Yeah, you actually can't speak on behalf of someone who's not here.
She was on the, on the list to speak, but she got sick at the last minute.
Yeah, and I understand, but, but she would actually have to be present to make her own remarks.
Okay, that's fine.
But I do want to thank you all, uh, for coming, and I do not take what you just stated lightly. There were a ton of, uh, personnel issues that were, that were stated, and I'm gonna ask if it's okay with the board, Dr. Bracy would, um, personally handle, uh, this and present us a full report, uh, by next meeting, if that's okay?
Yeah.
With the board.
And I just, whenever you finish, I just had a question.
Okay, Ms. Jackson.
So, um, like Chair Patillo said, um, thank you guys for coming out, um, and, you know, I know you guys had a full day, so we appreciate the feedback. So I just want to be clear on, uh, that I heard you guys well. So I heard, um, culture, I heard leadership, I heard morale, and I heard a training issue. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Are, are those the, the four things that you would think needs to be looked into?
And also, um, having, we weren't, we haven't been given any training to deal as far as with the COVID situation.
So, the training still?
Yes.
Okay. And he, Chair already covered the personnel thing, which, okay. I just wanted to make sure I heard you guys well.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask just one question? So, we would like to meet or have a meeting, so is it possible that we can come to the next school board meeting, or we need to know what you all feedback is gonna be as far as helping us with our issues that we're having?
Well, as far as the, the personnel issues go, tho, those are handled, uh, within the staff and Dr. Bracy, but he will report back to us on what's, what's, uh, what comes out of that. But you all are welcome to come to any meeting and voice your concerns and your remarks.
So who's going to, what, I guess what I'm asking is who's gonna get back with us so that we know that what our, our concerns will be taken care of?
Yeah, we're, we're actually tasked by our superintendent to actually handle this issue, and if, like, again, if you all have not been approached as far as with your concerns, as far as training and personnel things of that sort, you're always welcome to come back and speak. I, I'm not telling you to come back and speak to the board, to tell on the staff, but you're always welcome to come and let us know that your concerns have been addressed or not.
That's why I'm asking, well, my next question should be, how much time? Cause I, we don't want to come back to say, come back tomorrow, so I'm just asking, how much time do you all need before we can come back to approach you with these?
You, you're welcome to come to any, any open public meeting to, to discuss your concerns with that.
I'm sorry. I think what she's trying, well, I believe what she's trying to ask more so than think. Tomorrow, we have, uh, a report to work. We have basically known and have been in fear of doing this and speaking out. When we come to work tomorrow, what are we supposed to do to secure ourselves in this situation? I know it sounds strange, but just as in today, we have had situations where we have been asking, is, are you okay? Are you okay? So, we don't know how it's gonna go from today going into Thursday when y'all meet again as far as our leadership is concerned.
Yeah, I, I'm just answering carefully. The, the school board, we don't get involved with day-to-day personnel issues by law, but what I'm stating is that we've directed the superintendent to handle this situation and report back to us, but if you all do not receive any type of response or action, you're always welcome to come back to voice your concerns
Okay.
to the school board at any, at any public meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair?
I'm sorry, I didn't know somebody called.
Yeah, we have a question.
Which one?
Vernon.
Oh, Mr. Tillage, I'm sorry.
Um, I want to thank the, um, bus drivers for coming out this, um, evening to speak your concerns. Um, being a former bus driver, I understand firsthand many of the concerns that you all are facing with today. There, those same concerns were being voiced when I was a bus driver, um, six, seven years ago. And, um, as Chair Batillo said, that this ta, this has been tasked to the superintendent, and please give the superintendent time to do his due diligence. Um, and I always encourage staff to, um, you know, always follow your chain of command and then, you know, and as, um, Chair Batillo said, um, when any, um, you're always invited to come to any open public, um, school board meeting. But know that I support you 100% and I understand firsthand and personally many of the challenges that have been going on in transportation. And so, um, just know that I support you and, um, keep up your good work, and thank you for all that you do for this school system.
There are any additional speeches requested at this time?
Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.1, Annual Education Plan and Part B Flow Through for the 21-22 School Year. Dr. Bracy. I'm sorry. We have a consent agenda item 4.1 through 4.6. Does any board members have any objection to the consent agenda that we have at this time? If not, I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move for approval, Atkinson. Second, Schumay.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson, second by Ms. Schumay. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Thomas?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you so much. Before we move to our next agenda item, when we hear reports from our staff, I want to inform the board, as you see, that, uh, Adam Carroll, our school board attorney, is not present with us on this evening, but we are in the capable hands of Mr. Amit Habib from the same, uh, law firm of Walcott Rivers and Gates, and I welcome him for joining us on tonight, and thank you for coming. Agenda item 5.1, The Student Representative Report by Mr. Miles Hunt, soon to be Howard man. Welcome, sir.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Bracy, school board members, and the general public, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I do not have a report to present necessarily this evening, however, I do want to take the time to recognize Mr. Marshall Taylor, a junior at Churchman High School. Marshall performed exceptionally and almost achieved a perfect score on the Scholastic Aptitude Test. While he was unable to prepare for the test traditionally, Mr. Taylor credited Mrs. Arowe for his skillful teaching and assistance. And those who have come in contact with Mr. Z know that he's a direct and well-equipped educator who has been rewarded and awarded nationally for the dedication he's given and for the skills he possesses. If this is your first time hearing about Mr. Marshall Taylor, please do not forget his name, because I expect he would do excellent things, both in the field of physics, which he intends to study at the University of Virginia, and in his personal life. Churchman High School sophomore, Ms. Bayes, Ms. Bailey, excuse me, Rose Diaz, will be representing the Commonwealth of Virginia at the National Miss Amazing Summit, which is scheduled to take place in Nashville, Tennessee, later this year. Miss Amazing is an organization that exists to invest in girls and women with disabilities so that they can reach their fullest potential. We are so very excited for Ms. Diaz and are cheering her on as she participates in the summit this August. I would also like to congratulate Ms. Trinity Allen, a senior at IC Norcom High School, who has been officially named the Youth Port Laureate Ambassador for the City of Portsmouth. We are fully aware that Ms. Allen can go far with her talent and inspire many with the composition of her words. And while our middle school and high school classroom doors are not open, this is certainly concrete evidence that school is still in session. I must also thank the school board administration, parents and guardians, and all other stakeholders for a successful return to school for pre-kindergarten through sixth grade students on April 12th. Thank you. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, uh, Chairman Patillo. Mr. Hunt, it's so good to see you in person. Um, I don't think I realized you were that tall behind a computer screen, so, um, but even still, it's good to see you and thank you for being here. Um, I'm gonna ask you, how many more school days do you have left?
Personally, none.
None. See? So, school is still in session, but congratulations to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to commend you on the job that you have done in this unprecedented year, um, the way that you have connected with students and with teachers, and your, uh, way that you have kept what Portsmouth Public Schools is about at the forefront of what you present and how you present it and how you deal with the public. So, congratulations to you, Mr. Howard. Um, we will see you in, you know, three and a half years maybe for that graduation from Howard, and then we'll see you on to your next steps. But just thank you for what you have done this year, and it is really good to see you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much, sir. Agenda item 5.2, Resolution for Teacher Appreciation Week. Uh, Dr. Cromarty.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. Tonight, I bring forth for your recognition a resolution for National Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas teaching is an honorable profession, one in which all Americans know well through their own personal experiences, and whereas the National Education Association and the National Parent Teacher Association spearheaded the annual observance of National Teacher Appreciation Week, which commenced in 1984, and whereas National Teacher Appreciation Week, May the 3rd through the 7th, 2021, recognizes education, educator significance to our nation's future and our students' future well-being. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board convey its profound appreciation and heartfelt gratitude to our teachers for their diligence, zeal, and care of our great city's young people. And be it further resolved that the school board salute the division's teachers for the tremendous roles they play in educating children, and that the school board designate May 4th as National Teacher Appreciation Day. And be it finally resolved that this resolution of commendation be made part of the school board's official minutes and that copies be sent to all administrative units and schools.
Thank you. Thank you so much, sir. Thank you so much, sir.
Move for approval?
Second.
No?
No, it wasn't, it was just a resolution. They have a vote for approval on this, I don't believe. No, we did not have this up for a motion. Should there have been a motion for this?
Every day should be Teacher Appreciation Day.
I, I totally agree with that.
Yes.
Board members, do we have any other comments, uh, as far as the resolution is concerned? Thank you so much. Well, now I have our monthly report from curriculum instruction. Uh, Board members, thank you again for agreeing to the consent agenda. We want to allow some extra time to recognize some of our students on tonight, so thank you all for doing that. Uh, Dr. Nguyen?
Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, members of the board, Dr. Bracy, and our guests. This is the next best thing that we'd like to hear. We have our board report that gives an outline of each of the departments and the exceptional things that are going on. But tonight, we have a special presentation from our art department and we have our art supervisor here, Ms. April Taylor Martin. We're going to start with a video and then we have some very, very special awards to present to our students in person, which is exceptional. So we'll start with that and then I'll have Ms. April Taylor Martin come up.
Hi, my name is Emily Brown, we are the Arts Department at York City. I want to be able to be neat for a program we have for our visual arts students. We have two specialized visual arts programs, the Art, the Art Strife and the Art Academy Strife. The Art Strife is for especially talented students who wants to engage in the art community to improve their skill, study art history, and prepare for being in sports and art. These students must have an art portfolio, two letters, or a foundation, and short of a, an exhibition in the Art Strife. The Strife will prepare our students with a college portfolio for our students, while we also teach bright colors to students who pursue other careers in art and arts. They are academy trained for students who demonstrate an interest in visual arts. They must take one art course per semester and maintain a three-pointed and advanced course. It's not to complete art on through four, animation, ceramics, level one and two, graphic design and photography. These veterans are available to any dozen students who has a serious data paper and application are available on the arts department.
And now, what's your favorite art from the art community or the art students?
I think my goals for after high school are that I wanted to be an animator as my career. So that's the reason why I took me to art class, because I wanted to sharpen my skills and I wanted to just get better. And I have my skills kind of in my, um, in my art school, so that I can have a lot to pick from. And I just have more, more knowledge about art. And I thought it would help me get better for when I'm older and I get, um, get my career started.
So let's give a big shout. All of the artwork that you saw there was created by our students. We have some exceptional, uh, visual arts students. We also have a link from our webpage that displays artwork from, uh, every single school. We wanted to show it tonight, but we thought it would be even better just to put it on the webpage so that everyone can see all the wonderful art that our students are creating. So, Ms. Taylor Martin?
Thank you. Distinguished guests and school board members, Dr. Bracy, and all the parents and students who came out tonight. Isn't it wonderful to be back in person? Yes.
Yes, it is.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve Portsmouth Public Schools as a senior supervisor for the arts. I've only been on the job for about a month now and I'm so pleased to be here. I wanted you to know that I was born and raised in this community and I even attended Portsmouth Schools for a while. I started at Simonsdale in first grade and then moved away for a while and came back. And eighth and ninth grade, I spent at Wilson High School. I believe my art teacher's name was Mr. Beistrum. He is where I learned how to first throw a pot on the wheel. And he encouraged me to apply for the Governor's School for the Arts. So after 23 years in the classroom, in Chesapeake, at ODU, and in Norvick most recently, now it seems I've found my way home. I am so proud of our students who have faced this incredibly difficult year with determination and creativity. And a special thank you to our parents as well, because we have all survived quite a bit this year. As Dr. Nguyen mentioned, we have added to the website a short video that showcases the student works that are representative from all of our art teachers and all of our schools. So please join me in congratulating them on a job well done in such a difficult year. In celebration of our students who reward winners from the School Board Association Art Contest, the Scholastic Art Contest, the Chesapeake Bay Association Art Contest, as well as recipients of the Summer Governor's School Residential Program acceptance, I am pleased to present the following certificates of artistic merit. One of our students who cannot be here, our elementary student who won the School Board Association Contest, Zoraya Caraway. She will have her award accepted by her teacher, Mr. Jesse Boone. Next, we have an award of merit for the School Board Association Art Contest, Rebecca Knapp. Next, we have an award of merit in visual arts for Jennifer Futch for the Scholastic Art Contest Silver Key Award winner. We have an award of merit in visual arts for Rosaria Bachelor for the Scholastic Art Contest Honorable Mention Award winning. We have an award of merit in visual arts for Destiny Hale for being a Scholastic Art Contest Honorable Mention Award winner. We have an award of merit in visual arts for Jada Kimball for being accepted to the Summer Governor's School for the Visual Arts Residential Program. And we have an award of merit in visual arts for Madison Crumpet for receiving the Chesapeake Bay Art Association Scholarship Award and Art Exhibition. Thank you again for your generous support of the arts in our schools. Student engagement and creative outlets is vital for social and emotional well-being and will continue to be an activity that enriches their lives long after school. I am here as proof of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor Martin. Ms. Taylor Martin, I want to thank you again for, uh, finding your way back home. And I believe you're a test of like Dorothy, there's no place like Portsmouth, no place like home. But I thank you for what you do for our students, our art teachers. Mr. Boone, I haven't seen you in about five years, I don't think, since I visited your last school. It's good to see you, uh, on this evening. And I spoke with, uh, Dr. Bracy and we want to start honoring our, our students like we do state football championship teams. Our art contest winners and visual art winners, they're important to our school division. And what you do, you pave the way for other students to take that same path. So I really thank you for your, your, your effort, um, and your fortitude in doing what you do. And no one can do the things you do. You are, you're amazing, young people, you're special. And I'm looking forward to my own personal pieces of artwork when you all make it famous along with a check. So thank you all so much again. Ms. Thomas?
Okay, thank you. I just want to say something. Thank you so much, um, for just your dedication to teaching art, um, to the art department. I, I discovered art later on in life. I'm not an artist, but to the students, I just appreciate your vulnerability, your creativity, your vision to share your art. It's truly valued. I just encourage you all to keep going. I'm a collector of art. I had the pleasure to go to an art gallery and saw the sculpture of one of your, the teachers at Churchland High School. I can't think of his name, but he's a great sculptor at Churchland High School right now. Oh, right there, oh, wow, okay.
Mr. Larry Johnson?
Yes, he's an amazing sculptor. So I just want to say thank you to everyone, thank you to the students, and continue on in your journey, um, as future artists. And just thank you for sharing your creativity with the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillich.
Yes, um, congratulations to all of the art winners. The artwork was fantastic. And congratulations and welcome to you, um, welcome back to Portsmouth Public Schools. Art has never been a, 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 what's the word? A good thing, something I was good at. However, uh, Mr. Boone, you were my art teacher here at John Tyler. Matter of fact, we had art class on the stage. And, um, I still have some of that artwork. And so, uh, art is definitely something that, um, leaves a lasting impression. And, um, to the students, continue, um, keeping up the good work and practice your skills and I guarantee you it will pay off in the long run. Congratulations.
Uh, Ms. Hines and then Vice Chair Atkinson?
Thank you. I just want to say, welcome back to Portsmouth as somebody who is, um, from Portsmouth, which I think most of the board is. We're always happy when we have our, our, our birds come back home to nest and to, and to help garner and create and grow, um, from within. To the students, um, your artwork is beautiful, it's fantastic. It is therapeutic for me as a parent and as a teacher to know that you have been able to withstand and flourish and put your emotion and put your stress and your vulnerability, like Ms. Thomas said, into your work. It truly, truly shows and for that, students, I am grateful. To the art teachers and to the art department, my child is a fourth grader and, uh, tends to be very perfectionist. And through art this year, he has learned that perfection is not needed. He has been challenged in ways that he doesn't want to be challenged. He has grown and has enjoyed art as his elective. That is the one that he looks forward to every week. So for what you do to keep our students engaged, as a parent, I've seen him frustrated. I've seen him gloat. I have seen him happy. All about art, which is something at his age I never truly understood. So for what you guys have been able to elicit and solicit from these students and to push them to that next level in the environment that we are in, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. So thank you.
Thank you. And before our vice chair will come, you have one more student?
Yes, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure this student was going to be here, but we also have an award of merit in visual arts for Evan Nguyen for the Scholastic Art Contest Honorable Mention Award.
Alrighty, so I just want to say, um, congratulations to all the students and, and welcome back to Portsmouth. I actually was going to, uh, reach out to you. I'm on the advisory committee, I'm right here.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see.
That's a part of art, art is dope, it's just all over. But, um, I was going to reach out to you. I'm on the Alma Thomas Advisory, Community Advisory Committee for the Chrysler. And the exhibit is scheduled to open, um, in July. And, and what they wanted, uh, some of the board members to do is bring some students out. So if they're, if the seniors are going to be around for the summer, I would like for them to attend if, if they're open to it or, you know, anyone that's going to be home in your department, but I'll, I'll reach out to you for that event at the Chrysler. But thank you for all you do.
Excellent. I look forward to it.
Thank you so much again. And boy, if we can give all of our students a round of applause again. Agenda item 5.4, Consideration of Contract for Food Services Fresh Bread. I believe that's Mr. Falk.
Good evening, Chair Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, and school board members and Dr. Bracy. We have, uh, the first contract tonight is for, uh, food services fresh bread. And, uh, we move for a roll call vote for approval on that.
Move for approval, Atkinson?
Second, Hines?
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson, second by Ms. Hines, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Schumate?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Ms. Thomas?
Let me shut the door?
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes. Thank you so much. While we still have Mr. Falk here, uh, entertain a motion for agenda item 5.5, Consideration of Contract for Food Services Milk and Juice.
Move for approval, Atkinson?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson, second by Mr. Parent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Ms. Schumate?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes. Thank you so much. Agenda item 5.6, Roll Call Vote, Consideration of Contract for Waste Collection and Disposal Service. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval, Atkinson? Second, Schumate?
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson, second by Ms. Schumate, is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Schumate?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes. Thank you so much. Agenda item 6.1, Monthly Report, Dr. Bracy.
Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, and members of the board. Tonight I'm happy to report to you that after more than two weeks of students being back in our buildings, the division continues to be providing high-level instruction while also maintaining a safe, clean, and welcoming school environment. And that is not just coming from me. Over the past week and a half, I've been able to meet with my student, parent, and staff advisory groups. The first item on our discussion agenda in each of those groups was The first item on our discussion agenda in each of those groups was how the return to school has been. Overwhelmingly, I've heard how grateful our parents were for the work that went into the return. The students, though all of them were secondary students, are still and still in virtual instruction, have talked about how safe schools are and have been for their younger siblings and for all for their families. Our staff members thanked our administrative teams for their planning and their work ahead of the pandemic, recognizing the enormous feat that was in front of them with us coming back. I share this because I too want to applaud our staff and administration for their tireless efforts. We're thrilled to have rolled out this. And it's the effectiveness and efficient that it has been. And I want to especially thank our teachers for their willingness to roll up their sleeves and make this temporary normal as successful as possible. In fact, speaking of our teachers, I also want to be, I guess, now the now the second, because Dr. Karmarty has already read the resolution. I'll be the second to definitely wish them a happy Teacher Appreciation Week that will take place in May 3rd through 7th. So please make sure that you find the time to send a note, make a call, or share something special to show the teachers in your lives how much you admire and appreciate their work. Of course, May is also special because on Wednesday, May 19th, we'll be announcing our 2022 Citywide Teacher of the Year at our live in-person ceremony. So make sure to follow PPS on our Facebook page to watch the live stream at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, May 19th. Similarly, May 12th is National School Nurse Day. I want to make sure that we let our nurses know how vital they are to our school. From day to day to checking on students, the recent role they have played in the mitigation procedures and protocols, we're fortunate to have these wonderful nurses in our schools. Again, we are so grateful for all of our staff members. We could not have imagined a year like this one that we are facing, but we have been faced with it because of the, we've been able to accomplish this because of the incredible men and women that we have in this division. Chairman Patillo, that completes my report.
Thank you, sir. And before we get to our board member comments, I want to thank again Ms. Lewis and her administrative team for hosting us on this evening. And also to Mr. CJ Brown and his maintenance crew for keeping the gym set up for us and keeping everything nice and clean for us. Thank you for that, sir. Also, board members, on the next week's, next month's, next month's agenda, you'll see another consent agenda item. We plan on recognizing between 14 and 15 students at our next meeting. So I just want to make you all aware of that when the agenda is sent out. And I now entertain board member comments at this time. Ms. Schumake.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Patillo. I first would like to thank Dr. Bracy and Mr. Craig Hill for everything that you guys do. I know when new board members come in, we have our own agenda as far as what we would like to bring and what we would like to see Portsmouth Public School to have. And so, you know, a lot of times you have nine board members who want you to do a number of things in a short period of time. And so I just want to thank you for allowing me to assist in some of the things that I've asked for you to do, because I know it's a lot. And a lot of times I come to you with a lot of stuff, probably like other board members as well, that I would like to see happen in Portsmouth Public School. And you're so awesome, because you will sit there and you would try to do any and everything that you possibly can to make it happen. So with that being said, one of my campaign promises was to bring vocational training to Portsmouth Public Schools. We do have a wonderful CTE program, but this is just my small way in an attempt to try to expand it. And so I've been working really hard with the Department of Education, as well as the Department of Labor, to bring us a youth apprenticeship program. So on May 26th, at 5:00 PM, I would love for everyone, and this will be sent out to the Chamber of Commerce and and all of the local business owners, which I've already spoken to as well, but I'm sure that I've missed a few. But we're going to have a webinar. And so we're going to talk about the bridge to employment gap through registered apprenticeship and work-based learning. And so the Department of Labor is going to provide some information to business owners, some of the pros in which them partnering with Portsmouth Public Schools and how they can better assist us, as well as assist our students in moving forward with the work-based programs. So I would love for everyone to attend the webinar. It's going to be a lot of great information. Mr. Craig Hill, again, I know he's not here, but he has been a wealth of knowledge and he is really, really dedicated to the CTE Committee, as well as the program. So I would love for everyone to participate. If you know of any business owners, it doesn't necessarily have to be in Portsmouth, but in the 757 area that would like to participate and learn about how they can partner with Portsmouth Public Schools, please have them to contact me, Tamara Schumake. My number, of course, I'll put that out there. And also, they can email me, tamara.shumake@portsktwelv.com. So that information will be disseminated. And the information as far as the webinar and the Zoom link will be provided once you send me an email with your interest. So thank you so much, Chairman Patillo.
Thank you. You said the date was May 26th?
Yes, sir. May 26th at 5:00 PM, we're going to have the webinar to talk about some of the tax breaks that Department of Labor provides to the business owners if they choose to partner up with Portsmouth Public School to give our children some type of shadowing experience or internship. And then a lot of times, there's some scholarships and grants to provide paid internships. So they're going to provide all of this information to all of the business owners to get them interested and excited about partnering up with Portsmouth Public School CTE program.
Well, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Atkinson.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I I did see Mr. Malachi, but I just want to give a kudos and a comment. I think it was Mr. Malachi and and Mr. and Mr. Wilson that started the sign wars. I just want to say with everything that's going on with COVID and, you know, you know, staff morale, as as we know, that that really, you know, did it for the school system. I mean, we we are shining with this sign war, and I look forward to seeing more. And I just wanted to give a kudos to, you know, all the schools that participated. I'm looking forward to seeing more signs and continue to shine, PPS shots. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Patillo. This, first, I want to just say, I think that's an awesome idea, Board Member Schumake. So I would definitely, I definitely wrote that date down, so I think that's great. But I also wanted to bring, I got a flyer from one of our community leaders. As you know, we all know, we live in the city of Portsmouth, but also nationwide, there's been an increase in violence just nationwide since the pandemic. And one of the organizations in the community is having a Go Orange Weekend for national gun violence awareness. And I wanted to send that information, if I could, to you, Dr. Bracy, I guess, to, to, I'll send it out, to see if we can maybe put a blast out. And just as a school system to support this campaign of national gun violence awareness. It's going to be celebrated, I heard from the city of Portsmouth, but also the organization, which is sponsored by Stop the Violence 757, is also going to be partnering partnering with other cities as well. So I just think with bringing some awareness in solidarity with just the pandemic and the the rise in violence, I think it would be great for our city, our school system to also be a part of that and wearing orange.
Yeah, thank you. Mission, you send that to to Dr. Bracy and Lauren to review that. Thank you.
Chair?
Ms. Hines.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Karmarty and thank you to the high school principals for working so graciously and so feverishly to get a plan for graduation out, being the last time that we sat here was two weeks ago and, you know, everything was up in the air. I just, you know, I'm going to think back on 2020 and 2021 as the fact that we were just juggling everything. And the best answer that we could give to things was, I don't know. Well, you know, we didn't want an I don't know for graduation. And so for those of you that do not know, our graduation plans are June 19th at Old Dominion Stadium, and I'm sorry, I don't know the name of the the field there. But we will be graduating all three of our high schools in person at the stadium on that day. So, Dr. Karmarty, thank you for getting a schedule together. Thank you for getting it to us. And thank you from the families so that they can plan and address their family needs accordingly. So I just wanted to give kudos to that. So thank you very much. I also wanted to let let everybody know and say thank you to Ms. Schumake for sending the initial email about getting with council liaisons so that we can get that meeting on the books and have, you know, one more, at least a meeting with them before we go into budget votes and budget discussions. So Chairman and Dr. Bracy, we look forward to the conversations and catching up with you as we walk into this meeting, but also other board members as well. If there's anything that is burning or you want us to address, please let myself or Ms. Schumake know as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for setting up that meeting as well. Thank you. Ms. Thomas, did you have another comment?
Yeah, just one more question. I mentioned at the last meeting, and Dr. Bracy, I know you were doing as a takeaway, the summer program or summer date, summer school, and what that was going to look like and those dates. And even with that, I have one more thought. If we could add a summer resource section to our website for our students, even if they're not going to be doing summer school, if we could just maybe work with some of our city partners, at Parks and Rec, to let our parents and students know what other activities and summer activities are available for students so that our students can be engaged and active and busy over the summer. I would like that added to our website if possible. Thank you.
And then we also have a a parent resource center with our Title I department also that they can also call and get information from as well. That's Ms. Renee Hills.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments from board members at all? All right, seeing none. Thank you again to staff, to the staff for attending, and also Dr. Neal for representing John Tyler for being here with us. I consider this board meeting adjourned. Thank you. Have a great night.
Have a great night. Thank you all. God bless. Good night.